Good afternoon and welcome to the forty-fifth meeting of the Honglulook Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your names for our commission reporter. If you're here to testify on any agenda item, please come forward, be sworn in, identify yourself, and spell your name. Commissioners, let's move into the public hearing. Calling Agenda Item Number One, Transfer Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Seven Three One from Pint Size Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Christina Ohira for the applicant. My last name is spelled O-H-I-R-A. Next to me is Sandra Hamada. She is the manager of applicant. Her last name is spelled H-A-M-A-D-A.
Thank you. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Seven Three One.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number One, Transfer Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Seven Three One is approved. And thank you for your attendance. Appreciate that. Calling Agenda Item Number Two, Transfer Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Eight Nine Eight from Sung Gang Hee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Min Young Ho on behalf of Sung Gyeong Lee Brewing Businesses Sunshine Market.
Thank you. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve Transfer Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Eight Nine Eight.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Two, Transfer Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Eight Nine Eight is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Rai.
Let's call Agenda Item Number Thirty-Five out of order, Commissioners. Calling Agenda Item Number Thirty-Five, Request Number One Nine Dash One Six Eight One Nine.
Good afternoon, Chair O'Donnell, Members of the Honglulook Liquor Commission. James H. Lee appearing for applicant Jungle Bar.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, this is a request to downgrade the categorical of Application One Nine Dash One Five Two Three Six from a restaurant general license category two to a restaurant general license category one standard.
Mr. Lee, your client thoroughly understands the requirements of this category, in fact?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve Request Number One Nine Dash One Six Eight One Nine.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Thirty-Five, Request Number One Nine Dash One Six Eight One Nine is approved. Now we go back on to the public hearing and we call Agenda Item Number Three. Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Two Three Six from Jungle Bar LLC. Again, Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Chair O'Donnell, Commissioners, James H. Lee appearing for Jungle Bar, applicant Jungle Bar.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This matter has been continued from the May second, May ninth, May sixteenth, and May thirtieth meetings. Public hearing kept open. In this instance, administration's position is that applicant has failed to comply with the requirements of HRS 281-57-C3 in terms of its mail-out. Accordingly, our recommendation is that the public hearing be canceled. Then the applicant will follow with rep publication in a paper of a new public hearing date and mail-out.
Thank you, Ms. Rai. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Commissioners? Yeah. What is it? Recommended motion, please.
Well, motion to cancel public hearing and Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Two Three Six.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Three, Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Two Three Six is canceled. The public hearing is canceled and the application is canceled. Correct, Ms. Rai?
That is correct. If I could just note for the record, when this matter is put up for publication and mail-out again, it will be for a restaurant general license category number one standard bar and not a category two live entertainment or recorded music and dancing as the commission has voted to downgrade or permit the downgrade of the application.
Yes, very good.
Thank you, Ms. Rai.
Mr. Barrett, do you understand? Thank you, sir, for coming. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's go on. Let's take Agenda Item Number Thirty-Five out of order.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. All right, okay. Let's take Agenda Item Number Thirty-three out of order again. Calling Agenda Item Number Thirty-three, Request Number One Nine Dash One Six Eight Zero. No, that's not it, right?
Yep.
That is it? Oh, okay. I have Robin Melchior listed. Calling Agenda Item Number Thirty-three, Request Number One Nine Dash One Six Eight Zero Zero. Robin Melchior on behalf of Paint Your Paradise LLC, Mr. Keuch.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Members of the Commission, Keith Keuch appearing specially for Robin Melchior.
Okay.
Chair, I'm going to recuse myself for the interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Ms. Rai. Thank you. This is, yeah, okay, go ahead. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, motion to withdraw, Request Number One Nine Dash One Six Eight Zero Zero.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Thirty-three, Request Number One Nine Dash One Six Eight Zero Zero. The request to withdraw Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Five Eight Nine is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keuch. So for the record, can we call, I'll call Agenda Item Number Four. Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Five Eight Nine from Paint Your Paradise LLC.
Again, Keith Keuch appearing specially for Robin Melchior on behalf of the applicant. Consistent with Agenda Item Number Thirty-two, we ask that the public hearing be canceled, application be withdrawn.
Actually, since, pardon me, Mr. Chair. Since the commission has approved the withdrawal of that, it was appropriate to call the item in case anyone had appeared to testify on this matter. Commission need not take action on this because it has been withdrawn.
Okay. Let me just clarify one time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? For the record, seeing none. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, is that correct? Thank you, Mr. Keuch. Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Seven Zero Zero from Omah Kasi, Omah Kasi LLC.
Chairman, Members of the Commission, Ms. Rai. Gabriel Prebenz on behalf of the applicant. To my right is Thomas Ray Howard, he's the principal and executor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Ms. Rai.
Ms. Rai. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the April eleventh, who narrating testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Seven Zero Zero.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number One Nine Dash One Five Seven Zero Zero is approved. Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Zero Four Three from Long Strug Stores, California. Mr. Chu.
Good afternoon, Chairman O'Donnell, Members of the Commission. Newton Chu on behalf of the applicant, Long Strug Stores, California LLC. To my right, Chian Chanda Keavi, I previously provided spelling to the secretary. She is the district leader.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April eleventh, who narrating testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Zero Four Three.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Zero Four Three is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Thank you very much.
Moving into the license applications, Agenda Item Number Seven, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Nine Six from Events International, Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, Fisher. Rick Schneider, President and CEO of Events International.
Thank you very much. Commissioners? Aloha, Ta'ola.
Mr. Schneider, I saw you've done all you need to do, speaking with HPU and security and HPD and all that.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
I think there's an ops plan that was submitted that has all the.
Yes, thank you.
Part of the ops plan, there appears to be a discrepancy in terms of total attendance. There's two thousand on the first paragraph and then the third, six thousand people.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a misprint. There's no way we could put six thousand people in there.
So it's under the security detail paragraph, so your estimate is two thousand.
It's two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
If, if they're lucky.
So that's what you say would be probably max attendance?
Yeah, I don't see it. Right now, based on ticket sales, we're probably looking at fifteen hundred max.
You can put any motion, please.
Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Nine Six.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Seven, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Nine Six is approved. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. You're not going anyplace. Calling Agenda Item Number Eight, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Nine Seven from Events International Incorporated. Ms. Rai, preliminary, patch.
Rick Schneider, President and CEO of Events International.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Nine Seven.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Eight, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Nine Seven is approved. Calling Agenda, calling Agenda Item Number Nine, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Seven Six Eight from Hui Aloa, Haina, Momoa. How is that? Momoa, right?
Momona.
Oh, Momona. Oh, I'm sorry. Momona, oh my goodness. Better watch my. Okay. Aloha, chair. Aloha, kakiaka.
Just stick to the English.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Daniel Anthony, D-A-N-I-E-L-A-N-T-H-O-N-Y, and I'm the project coordinator for Hui Aloa and Momoa.
And I'm Katie Ziemann, Z-I-E-M-A-N-N, the authorized agent.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner?
This event is in the parking lot of Sears.
Yes, is that the Pro Ridge Farmers Market?
Okay. Is that the parking, is that where it's parking lot of Sears?
It's upstairs.
The Malka side parking lot, which, which.
Farmers Market is downstairs, right, right now, but among the others, they moved it?
No, it's not. It's across from the old CAM movie theaters.
Okay.
The Pro Ridge Phase One upper parking lot.
So up on the rooftop by Macy's?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, hot, that there, I'm sorry. Oh, goodness, okay. And they're gonna be taking, so they're gonna take the whole side of Macy's on that side?
They've currently been operating on the Makai corner of, in order the, the entrance to go downstairs is. So it's Makai of that entrance.
By where the Monroe's parked, on that side?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Seven Six Eight.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Nine, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Seven Six Eight is approved.
Mahalo, Haino.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item, Item Number Ten, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Two Nine Eight from Yuri Maru Holdings, Inc. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yogi Gota appearing on behalf of Yuri Maru Holdings, Inc. To my right is Mr. Tomo Kazu Kido. That's spelled T-O-M-A, I'm sorry, T-O-M-O-K-A-Z-U, last name Kido, K-I-D-O. We have no changes to this report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Okay. Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Two Nine Eight.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Ten, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Two Nine Eight is approved.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Eleven, Application.
They also have thirteen, Chair.
I'm sorry. Did I miss that?
It's a ten.
This should be calling Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Yes.
That's Application One Nine Dash One Six Two Nine Seven.
Yes.
Yuri Maru Holding, Inc.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yogi Gota appearing on behalf of Yuri Maru Holdings, Inc. To my right is Mr. Tomo Kazu Kido. If this is approved, we would request if it's possible for the application or the temporary to be effective on September first, 2019.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve temporary application number One Nine Dash One Six Two Nine Seven to be effective nine one twenty nineteen.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Two Nine Seven is approved, effective September first, 2019.
Thank you very much.
Let's go back to Agenda Item Number Eleven, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Good. I would, calling. Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number One Nine Dash One Six Five Three Five from Smile Hills, Inc.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yogi Gota appearing on behalf of Smile Hills, Inc. To my right is Alicia Marotz, that's spelled M-A-R-O-T-Z. She's a representative of the applicant. We have no changes to this report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Gota, did you see the, the protest?
Yes, I did. I'm not sure if they're speaking of our premise. We don't have any outdoor area.
Oh, okay.
This is completely enclosed. This is on what, the, the current vegan hills. So it's on wildlife by Kinchi Two and Big City Diner. So there's really no front. There's no.
Yeah.
There.
There's no outdoor seating.
Correct, there's no outdoor seating. So I'm not sure what they're referring to.
Okay.
Also note on the exhibit D attached to the investigative report, there's indication that there's only acoustic background music. Is that accurate? Exhibit D.
So if any type of music is played, it's gonna be acoustic, overhead music. There's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Motion to approve Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Five Three Five.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Five Three Five is approved.
And they have fifteen also.
And we have fifteen also. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Five Three Four from Smile Hills, Inc.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yogi Gota appearing on behalf of Smile Hills, Inc. To my right is Alicia Marotz, a representative. We have no changes to this report.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve temporary application number One Nine Dash One Six Five Three Four.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Five Three Four is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Let's go back to Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. This is, Ms. Rai.
Yes, this matter calls for the renewal of applications for liquor licenses for fiscal year 2019, 2020. We have provided you with the motion language that we would, we would like you to recite into the record, please.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Gunnabon, would you do us a pleasure?
Move that all applications for renewal of liquor license, licenses for the period of July first, 2019 to June thirty, 2020, which were submitted to the Liquor Commission with the required fee and corresponding documents by July first, 2019 during business hour seven forty-five AM to four thirty PM or postmarked no later than twelve midnight on Monday, July nine, July first, 2019, and which meet the requirements of Section 281-45 Hawaii revised statutes to be approved except those licenses which are brought before the commission in accordance with Section 281-61 for good cause will not have their licenses renewed.
Second motion.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twelve is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Fourteen, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Five Zero Zero for non-stop convenience.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. To my right is me, Yoon Hee, the applicant. The record reflect Wayne Lucas concert. We have no changes to the investigator's.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Okay. Motion to approve temporary application number One, One Nine Dash One Six Five Zero Zero.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Five Zero Zero is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Four Eight from MIBB LLC. Gentlemen?
My name is Micah Kuhnui, M-I-C-H-K-U-L-B-N-U-I.
Iiner Kumbrach, R-A-I-N-E-R-K-U-M-B-R-O-C-H.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve temporary application number One Nine Dash One Six Six Four Eight.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Application Number One Nine Dash One Six Six Four Eight is approved. Thank you. Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Calling Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Request Number One Nine Dash One Five Nine Four Seven from Nine Three Nine Entertainment LLC. This is a request for approval of permanent reduction of license premises.
Good afternoon, Stuart Shirasu, S-T-E-W-A-R-T-S-H-I-R-A-S-U, President of Nine Three Nine Entertainment.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to say I apologize I couldn't make it last week.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Shirasu, have you been provided a copy of the investigative report?
Yes.
And would you like to comment on the comments that were made on page two for the?
I think the confusion of the issue was whether it's completely separated from our existing liquor license and the, from the area that has liquor versus not, does not have liquor. And the question I had proposed, I had asked the investigator was if we do a fire door that can only go out but not allow the liquor side to go in, would that be acceptable? And he did not know the answer. So that may be why he said he's uncertain whether it's separate or not. But in, we did find an alternative fire exit out, through another exit, so we wouldn't need that connection between the two areas.
I was more less referring to his opinion of the storage space, which is the reason for deletion.
Yes.
What, what is your comment to that about?
Well, the reason we have a storage space?
I'm referring to the living quarters or possible game room that was possibly.
It's not a game room, not a game room.
Okay, so do you wanna elaborate a little, like, if you look at page two? Maybe you wanna read the investigative report because it's a, it's, the, the reasons is a possible game room and/or living quarters for his female dancers. So for him to come to that conclusion, maybe you can explain to us where he may be wrong or why, why he would.
Well, when we were looking at, the reason we had the space originally was for storage and we had a large area for our AC units. But we moved last year to splits, which means we don't need the large central, fifteen-ton central units upstairs. So we removed those, which created a large space, so we can use that AC area as our storage, which means we now have this larger storage space that's basically not being used at all. And, you know, basically in an effort to reduce our rent, we considered options for subleasing it out. And a couple of options, a couple of people have come to us. One was a friend who teaches professional pool. So he said he needs the space for pool tables, which is what I told the investigator. But it would be completely separate and it wouldn't have anything to do with us. And another option would be because it's, we're mixed residential and we have a lot of traveling dancers that come, they sometimes need housing. And so if we could, and there's a shower and bathroom in there, that we could convert it into living quarters that they could rent out for a week or a month or something. But again, it would be totally separate, which is why we wanted to separate it from our liquor license.
So let me ask you this. The current floor plan shows that there's locker rooms, makeup room, there's a manager's office. Where do you kind of relocate that to your, your tenure?
The manager's office is downstairs now. That's been relocated and it's, the, the locker room would just be reduced in size.
And then the makeup room for the dancers?
Also reduced. So they would just squeeze into the, exist at the other side of that, basically. The locker room will be reduced.
But then you're exempting that part of the license now?
Yes. There's no liquor there anyway, but it's just a locker room.
And then where would they, so, and they still utilize the restrooms up there?
No, they would lose that. So they would, there's still downstairs restrooms. And then they would access the locker room through the stairs, the interior stairs there.
There's an interior stairs, is that the one to the park?
Above the stairs.
What is separating the two spaces now?
The, a doorway.
So there's a wall and then a doorway?
Yes.
What do you mean by blocking off the door?
Seal it off so that you couldn't access it.
From either side?
Right. That's the whole point of, at least that's what investigator told us, is you cannot have any sort of pass-through there.
Let me hear from the menacing supervisor.
Supervising investigator, Daniel Sato. Can we elaborate? Mr. Sato, you've heard the testimony from the licensee and the question posed by the commission. Could you clarify for us? So when I first read the report and spoke with the investigator, it was my understanding that it was gonna be separated totally like Mr. Shirasu was saying, completely walled off. But as we looked at the floor plans and the floor plan that's actually submitted, it doesn't look like it's gonna be completely walled off.
Why, why not?
Well, that was the floor plan she turned in.
The first one? Yeah, that's why we read it.
Mr. Rockick, please, let him testify. And there was possible issues of living quarters and game room that was mentioned to the investigator. So, I mean, at that point, it was, we also looked at the floor plan, how, how it would go and. plan, how, how it would go, and that's why we put in the report, as far as that goes.
And you stand by your report?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Go, continue next to executive session, please.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Uh, I'm sorry, could I ask a question? What does there, the use of the non-liquor license area?
We're going into executive session, you can talk to the supervising investigator. Okay, can I have a moment?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we're now in executive session. Okay, thank you, uh, we are now back on the, uh, on the official record, uh, commissioners?
Uh, yes, Chair, before we make the motion, um, just wanted to remind you about the liquor commission rules?
Yes.
About having all of your employees registered. You mentioned having visiting dancers?
Yes.
They need to be registered employees in the commission.
Right, thank you.
And Mr. Shirasu, you've, we, when we questioned you and you made reference of where things have moved manager's offices and stuff, those are not reflective in your plans that you provided the commission, it's a bit air-baked.
I'm just not using that area anymore for my office, so, we used, we had two managers.
Yeah, so you would, you would propose to us what you're proposing to do because you're, you, what you've made for the record is the manager's office is no longer upstairs, it's downstairs, correct?
The area that we're using for manager's office, yeah, there's still a desk and everything there, we're just not using it.
Okay, but on your floor, your first floor, floor plan, it doesn't show the office on here, so what you're saying you're doing or you're proposing to do?
Yes.
Is not reflective on the plan you've given to us?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, in order for us to even consider or look at something, we need to consider what you're considering to do or proposing to do, not have a floor plan and tell us after what you want to do, you know?
Okay, I see.
So we want to see a very clear floor plan, how you want it to look if we are to approve this request.
Okay.
Everything, exactly where it's going to be.
Okay.
So that we don't have any question in our mind on where things are.
So, um, the motion will be to continue request number one nine dash one five nine four seven, um, is a week good for you to...
To redraw the, the floor plan?
Work with commission about, I work with the staff on how to remedy some of these issues?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
So, motion to continue request number one nine dash one five nine four seven to...
Is it appropriate to also request that we work with a separate investigator that we've been using?
No, no.
No, 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 no.
No, so let me continue my motion.
Mr. Shirokic, don't push it.
Yeah, let me continue my motion uninterrupted, please. It would be motion to continue request number one nine dash one five nine four seven for one week.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number seven is continued for one week. Calling agenda item number eighteen. Request number one nine dash one six seven four nine from Murphy's Inc.
Good afternoon, Don Murphy, Murphy's Bar and Grill, Ms. Ry, Chairman, Commissioners?
And this is for the Hawaii Children's Cancer Foundation fundraiser, Mr. Murphy?
Correct.
And it's going to be held at the number one Irish establishment in the state of Hawaii, is that not correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
That is correct.
I did, I did tell, that is correct.
Remind us, how long you been doing this?
This will be, this is the fourteenth year.
Thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve request number one nine dash one six seven four nine.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, request number one nine dash one six seven four nine is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Calling agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one six eight zero five from Tsunamis Waikiki LLC. Mr. Kiuchi, Commissioner Meishiro, please.
Yes, Chair, thank you, I'm going to recuse to a conflict.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keith Kiuchi represents Tsunamis Waikiki LLC. This is a request to waive the five-hundred-foot rule to allow Tsunamis to apply to move their Class XI Cabaret license, which was at twenty-two sixty Fuhio Avenue to one thousand and seven, uh, one thousand and one Dillingham Boulevard. To give the commission some background, the licensee's lease at twenty-two sixty Fuhio was terminated when the landlord, the feasible landlord, which is the Weinberg Foundation, decided to tear down all of the improvements and start new. So it wasn't a situation where the licensee's lease was terminated per se. This location that we're asking for the waiver, and again, the commission is not deciding on the issue instead of license, you're just deciding on the waiver, so the commission would still get to review the public hearing, see whether there's any input for or against. This location is at one thousand and one, uh, Dillingham Boulevard, space one oh one, used to be the location of the old Silvee nightclub, which at one point was a cabaret Class XI license. The area has no residential around, which is why it tapped to Google Maps. So across the street from Hornville Community College, on the Malka side, on the Evers side, it's Kukai Shopping Center, on the Diamond Head side, there's another strip mall that has a cabaret license, there's a cabaret license in Kukai Shopping Center as well, all of which is in the submission. This is an area that's a little unique because there is no residential, which is the reason why the request is being made. This landlord has, also was the landlord of the previous cabaret license, uh, and actually what I did is the landlord is my client, Tsunamis is my client, so I put the two of them together. Again, this is only the way to five-hundred-foot rule to allow the application be accepted and nothing else. The commission retains full jurisdiction for a public hearing over any submission.
Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi, commissioners?
So it's within five hundred feet, how far within five hundred feet are we talking about?
Uh, frankly, right next door to Dillingham Trade Center is a hostess license. Now Leslie's Place, which has a cabaret license, is a little farther removed, they're closer to the canal, but they're definitely, I would say they're within two hundred feet. And on the, uh, Diamond Head side, it's probably, again, within two hundred feet. There are two buildings, one thousand and one and one thousand and seven Dillingham, so the, um, other cabaret license on the Diamond Head side is one, two buildings removed, but still within two hundred feet.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we're now in executive session. Okay, um, thank you, we're now back on the record, commissioners?
Okay, um, motion to approve request number one nine dash one six eight zero five.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one six eight zero five is approved.
Thank you.
If I could just say something for the record?
Yes.
So, uh, the, the request on number nineteen is in two parts.
Yes.
I'm going to ask the commission to take no action on number two.
Right.
So the, the, uh, the aforementioned approval will only go to part one of the request.
It's going to stay a Class XI Cabaret, not with the other category.
Yeah, and we'll note for the record that, um, that, that we only approved the waiver.
Thank you.
Can we amend, can we amend the motion just to include, uh, request number one, paragraph number one?
Sure.
Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, motion to approve request number one nine dash one six eight zero five for the waiver of row three eighty-two dash forty-five point two A. Only.
Thank you. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one six eight zero five is approved with the verbiage in Vice Chair Gunnabon's motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi. Calling agenda item number twenty, request number one nine dash one six eight zero seven from Katina LLC. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Daniel Kaialii, K A A I A L I I, managing member of Katina LLC.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Okay, motion to approve request number one nine dash one six eight zero seven.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, request number one nine dash one six eight zero seven is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-one. Request number one nine dash one six eight one six from Jermaine's Luau Inc. Mr. Kiuchi? Commissioner Meishiro.
Charles, we kiss on the matter, it's a conflict.
Thank you.
Again, good afternoon, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keith Kiuchi, representing Roberts Hawaii Inc. This is a request to waive the fingerprint and the personal history affidavit only as to Robert Iwamoto Jr. There are actually more, um, officers, there's going to end up being seven officers of the new Jermaine's Luau, and what's occurring, and you're not approving this, but the interest in Jermaine's Luau is being transferred from S P F C H, which is Zippy's, to Roberts Hawaii because of Mr. Iwamoto's physical condition, getting him to do a fingerprint, getting him to come in to a personal history is challenging, um, and I can represent, he has had no criminal convictions since his last application, and it hasn't changed.
Can you also represent to the commission for the record that he is not actively doing any work?
He is not active, he, um, you are correct, Chair O'Donnell, he is not active, as of July first, the president of Roberts Hawaii Inc. will be Roy Fund, replacing proceeding issue.
That is correct, thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six eight one six.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, request number one nine dash one six eight one six is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can we have Commissioner Meishiro back, please? Calling agenda item number twenty-two, AK Corporation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Arnold Green, representative for AK Corporation. To my right is the owner and sole owner, M A I T H I A N H N G U I E N.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. Green, how, how long are you going to...
Well, we're in the process now.
How much time do you need?
We're looking for another place. It's going to be a minimum of six to eight months, because you'll be able to find time.
Mr. Green, what is, um, the condition of the existing premise, is it?
Um, it's closed.
They're closed?
Motion, motion to, um, approve request for agenda item number twenty-two. Keep license in safekeeping.
Yep.
And renew.
And renew.
Renewalize, yeah, safekeeping is...
It's requesting approval to renew his license, as a requirement of the license going into safekeeping.
So motion to approve request?
Yeah.
Okay, second the motion.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Volume Services Inc.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Members of the Commission, Thomas Berger, for the licensee. Uh, we're seeking to have approval to renew the license in safekeeping. Current, currently, there's an application to do, uh, a change to the license to a restaurant general, and the licensee is operating under a temporary license, so any time for the investigator to complete the investigator report, we've been working actively with them to ensure that they have all the information that they need.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request, um, agenda item number twenty-three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, SM eight oh eight Inc.
Chair, I recuse myself to a conflict, commissioners?
Thank you very much. Before, before I call the, uh, agenda item, Mr. Kiuchi, are you...
I have, I also have twenty-seven and twenty-nine, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I have thirty-four.
I would request we take those out of order instead of having, uh...
Twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-four.
Commissioner Meishiro.
Getting his work out today.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I have a lot of things on my agenda today.
Uh, calling agenda item number twenty-eight, uh, twenty-four, correct?
Yes.
Uh, SM eight oh eight Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi, for the licensee. This is Club Evergreen, they were located, uh, in an area which has since been demolished. We're going to ask that the license be kept in safekeeping, uh, we do intend to renew it, she's going to try to find another location, which has proven to be challenging so far, but, uh, we'd like it renewed for another year.
Are we going to Dillingham, isn't that the new area?
I, you know what? I did, I did offer that to her first, because they're both my clients, so...
No, I mean, there's so much vacant warehouse space there.
There is warehouse space, yes, you're right, Mr. Chair.
Um, motion to approve agenda item number twenty-four.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-four is approved. Next agenda item is twenty...
Seventy.
Twenty-seven, calling agenda item twenty-seven, Regal Food Inc.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi, for the licensee. Regal Food Inc.'s only retail location is here at the Chinese, China, Chinese Cultural Plaza. They want to keep the license because they're intending to sell it. They're going to get out of the retail business, fortunately or unfortunately, um, they're going to stay totally in the wholesale business. So Kerry Law, who owns the company, has asked me to renew it for another year, he's going to try to find a buyer for the retail business along with the license.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve agenda item number twenty-seven.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-seven is approved, and did you say twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine and then thirty-four for the last one.
Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, uh, Tsunamis Waikiki.
Again, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi, for the licensee. This is related to the earlier matter, so we would like it renewed and keep it in safekeeping.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve request, um, for agenda item number twenty-nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-nine is approved, calling agenda item number thirty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, this is request number one nine dash one six eight one five.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. Chairman, the Commissioner Keith Kiuchi, representing PB Restaurant Corp. This is requesting a waiver of the temporary license rule. Prima Trotteria, who's at that location, lost their license on June thirty, they did not renew. It continued operating until March thirty-first. They have entered into agreement to sell it to PB Restaurant Corp., and in case you're curious, this is, um... And in case you're curious, this is operated by a chef named Paul Bentley, who's Australian, but does Mexican food, um, high-end Mexican food. So, we would ask that be waived, the license was terminated less than a year ago.
Mr. Kiyuchi, for the record, you've mentioned March thirty-first. Can you tell us what year?
March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, but the license was terminated June thirty, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six eight one five, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-four, request number one nine dash one six eight one five is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kiyuchi. Can we have Commissioner Mioshiro back, please? Where are we going, back to twenty-five? Thank you. Commissioner Mioshiro, you just sit right there and be comfortable. You said twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty-five, Holly Kulani Corporation. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Karen Winter, W.I.N.T.E.R., on behalf of Holly Kulani Corporation, DBA Holly Puna Waikiki. This is the formerly known as the Waikiki Park Hotel. We request approval to renew our liquor license for the following fiscal year and to keep it in safekeeping. The hotel is still undergoing its renovations, and we anticipate the reopening in mid-October of this year.
Thank you. Okay, motion to approve agenda item, request for agenda item number twenty-five, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five is approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number, excuse me, twenty-six, New Bangkok Inc.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Arnold Green, authorized representative for New Bangkok. To my right is Ratchenee, R.A.T.C.H.N.A.N.E.E., last name is Zankowski, S.A.N.C.K.O.W.S.K.I.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve agenda item number twenty-six, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-six is approved. Coming, uh, calling agenda item number twenty-eight, Cypress Hawaii Food Systems, L.T.D.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Hideki Hayashi, agent for Cypress Hawaii Food System Limited, DBA Tsukiji Shokuto H. My last name, spelling, H.A.Y.A.S.H.I.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve agenda item number twenty-eight, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-eight is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number thirty, Stack Sports Bar.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the license was actually picked up today, no action by the commission is required.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty?
Thirty-one.
Thirty?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Agenda item number thirty-one, JCC Inc.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Arnold Green, authorized representative for JCC Inc. To my right is An, moved in, A.N.H.D.H.U.D.I.N.H., the sole owner of the business.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, uh, agenda item number thirty-one, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-one is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-two, Rainbow Valley Supermarket Inc. Good afternoon, Mr. Green.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, James Lee, representing Rainbow Supermarket Inc. Uh, seated to my right is Mr. Chin Sok An, A.T.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve agenda item number thirty-two, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-two is approved.
Thank you very much.
So, we've handled thirty-three, correct?
One, thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Thank you so much, okay. Uh, calling agenda item number thirty-six, Arts Culture Merchants. Good afternoon, Ms. Reed.
Nicole Reed, R.E.I.D., for Arts Culture Merchants. Is she all right?
Marty Sinjin, for Arts Culture Merchants, et cetera.
You're gonna give our main report?
Thank you.
So, on May third, we had our event. Closure happened on time, ended on time, musicians concluded on time at ten P.M., and visual artists concluded by midnight. Our streets were open before three A.M. We had a program coordinator, La La Ness, who was on site to do the arts entertainment management. She was there till eleven. Michael Gray of Nextdoor was on site to manage beer and wine, and Thomas Fraser managed our operations with HPD Safety Systems, GM Rentals, food vendors, and DTS. Um, we had four food stands that provided a variety of food that was, um, well-received. We had our beer and wine service that began at eight and closed at eleven. Um, consumption was completed before twelve, and the streets were clear of any type of alcohol in cups at that point. Overall, our sales were a little bit lower than the previous month, but what we're hoping to offset is instead of doing kegs and drafts, to move to cans. It's environmentally more friendly to not be using plastic, so we're gonna make a little bit of a switch and see if that helps us. HPD Special Duty was on hand from seven thirty till three, we had a full staff, one sergeant, two blues, and six foot. Um, we did have one small incident where a young man attempted to steal a tip jar from one of our food vendors, and they fled to, uh, one of the four entrance exits that are, of course, staffed, and HPD had a fun time, um, staffing him. So, the tip jar was replaced, um, no one was hurt, um, and that, uh, that person was other than that, there were no incidences, um, that we heard of or saw. Uh, we were able to, uh, create kind of a cohesive experience for people in that weekend from Chinatown, where there was the Cinco de Mayo celebration on Sunday. So, we tried to play into that by having Song Karibe give our music and have a Latin theme, and then our artist was Costa. So, we were really excited, we cleaned and produced over thirteen mural pieces, which have been in display, along with, um, taken to other areas or on display in other areas in the community. And our cleanup occurred by two thirty, pickup of portable luas and, and street sweeping was, uh, done, and then our city waste bin liner, of course, was replaced. For June, uh, for this month, we actually increased our luas from two to three at the request of the, um, vendor, stating that the two were just getting a little too full. So, we had three for May, that worked out well, we're gonna continue that with June. Um, we saw about the same amount of patrons and sold about the same amount, a little less, so we're hoping to continue this with our next events. We are taking a brief hiatus in July, just with the, uh, holiday weekend, um, and then we'll be back to ask you for August and December.
Thank you for the detailed report. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Did you receive or are you aware of any noise complaints from either of these two events?
Not that I'm aware of, or not that I have heard from DTS or from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very unusual to have an incident on Smith Street in a newer one, a more respectable area, they try to steal the tip.
Yeah, try, try.
Tried.
I can feel like HPD was just waiting at the gate, though, they saw him, so apparently everybody gave a clap, and, uh, poor guy, wasn't his day. But, we're happy he had a good event.
Very good, thank you for that detailed report, we appreciate it.
It's not a problem, thank you very much.
Commissioner, Commissioners, can I have a type of voucher for the adoption of decision and orders?
No action, thank you, thank you. Um, motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items thirty-seven and forty-eight inclusive, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, the adoption of decision and order, agenda items number thirty-seven to forty-eight inclusive are approved. Let's move into adjudication, please.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel appearing for the prosecution for today's adjournment adjudication.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number forty-nine, Kamalu, Kamalu, Kamamalu Market, excuse me.
This licensee has requested a continuance to July eleventh, twenty nineteen, and I have no objection.
Thank you.
Motion to continue agenda item forty-nine, Kamamalu Market, to July eleventh, two thousand nineteen, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-nine is continued to July nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
July eleventh.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, July eleventh. Calling agenda item number fifty, Brothers Market.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Minister Bill Harrison, on behalf of Brothers Liquor. To my right is the manager, Lo, L.O.W.E.L.L., last name is Bakke, B.A.K.K.E.
Do we waive reading of the charge?
We do waive reading of the charge.
How would you like to plead, Mr. Harrison?
We're prepared to enter a no contest plea with mitigating circumstances.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
Um, there were previous violations, but for adjudication purposes, this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, we would note that Brothers Liquors has been a mom and pop operation in the neighborhood for about over thirty years now, um, and it's a liquor store and a convenience store. They do their best to try to, um, anticipate these kinds of problems and correct them. The individual employee was trained properly with regard to reviewing licenses and, um, unfortunately, did not, uh, do what was right that, that day. Um, and as part of the employment process, they're notified that they're gonna be terminated if something like this should've, were to happen, and, and she was terminated. Um, so we're asking the, the commission to approve the recommendation.
Ms. Neely, was, uh, was ID asked for?
Not in this case.
This was a part of our compliance.
Uh, so we do these every year, and most of these individuals are gonna be vertical IDs, so that is a good indication, a good red flag to all of your cashiers, that that person received an ID before they were of age to consume alcohol, purchase alcohol. So, please make sure that your employees have been trained to ask for ID, and big red flag when it's a vertical ID. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fifty-one, Long Strub Store, number one oh nine, eight eight, Mr. Chu.
Good afternoon, Commissioner O'Donnell, Members of the Commission, Neely, on behalf of the licensee. To my right, Christopher Kamai, K.A.M.E.I., District Leader. Are we waive reading of that charge?
How would you like to plead, Mr. Chu?
Plead no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is the first violation of sale of liquor to minor, I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Chu?
Uh, yes, this is an unfortunate incident where an employee violated our policy on, um, making sales of alcohol products. Uh, as you know, we've changed our policy to, uh, address these types of, uh, problems. We, now we require that when an, an employee is, uh, given a vertical ID, they must check with the manager, so we have another set of eyes on it. And in this situation, the employee did not, uh, call for a manager. The employee claimed that she read the date to be nineteen eighty-eight instead of nineteen ninety-eight, put in that date, and, uh, violated our policy. So, it's very unfortunate, um, that it occurred.
Motion, sorry, but.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Chu, oh, is this a store that had all of the opposition? Along store, you're in Wine Eye, right?
This is Makaha.
Makaha, right?
Yes.
You had the opposition from the church?
There was one from the church.
That is in the back of the store, correct?
Yes, correct. My, my understanding is that that church actually never came about. I don't believe that was after, actually ever stopped to be a church. I think that they were looking to go into that location, um, but as far as I know, I don't know if that church has been offered.
The point I'm trying to make is there was community.
Yes.
Opposition, correct? And now you're, um, was the ID checked on this?
Yes.
It was checked? Okay, be mindful of your neighbors and your employees. Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty-one, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Moving on to agenda item number fifty-two, Sunset Mini Mart.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Members of the Commission. My name is James H. Stanton, and the authorized representative for Sunset Mini Mart. The owner was here earlier, but he had to, uh, leave. We're asking for a continuance until September eighteen, two thousand eighteen, in this manner. And the reason is the employee charged, uh, in his case, if the, the employer does not represent him, um, has had his hearing continued until September four of this year. And, uh, I've gone over the case with my client, and I believe that he has a good faith of defense, but we are asking for a continuation until September eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Ms. Neely?
I have no objection, but I believe, uh, actually, September nineteenth is a Thursday, so.
Correct, sorry about that.
But otherwise, no objection.
So, uh, Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
September nineteenth is the case?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Motion to continue agenda item fifty-two, Sunset Mini Mart, to September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty-two is continued to September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you.
Calling, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Members of the Commission.
Calling the commission. Agenda item number fifty-three, Island Colony Aloha Mart. Island Colony Aloha Mart?
This licensee has requested a continuance to June twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item fifty-three, Island Colony Aloha Mart, to June twenty-seven, two thousand nineteen, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty-three is continued to June twenty-seven, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number fifty-four, Waikiki Beach Market.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, again, and Commissioners. Uh, as the authorized agent and also attorney for the Grace Lee licensee and DBA Waikiki Beach Market, we waive the reading of the charges and enter no contest. Also, I would like to explain that the, the absence of the licensee.
Thank you very much, because you used the verbiage "we," and I only see "you."
Yes, I really appreciate hearing. Uh, the family had an urgent trip to make to Korea due to family matter, like the parents is greatly ill, so they apologize for their absence.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Leader, plea?
No contest.
Motion to accept a no contest, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty-four, uh, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Uh, this is the first violation for sale of liquor to a minor, I recommend a fine of one thousand. This is the first violation for sale of liquor to a minor. I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Lee, what happened?
If I may explain, the husband, Mr. Sang Lee, was on duty that day. He was watching the suspicious activity on CCTV, was very attentive to the person in front of him. He made a grave error of selling the liquor to a minor. And he got an earful from his wife, so I assure you that this won't happen again.
You want to sell liquor, or you want to watch TV?
No, he was watching the video.
Oh, the video.
Yeah, the suspicious activity in the corner of the store. And he was attentive to the person in front of him.
So I assume he's more afraid of his wife than he is of us?
I reserve my judgment.
Ms. Neely, do you have anything to comment on representation?
Yeah, I mean, in this case, the clerk didn't even ask for an ID.
This was a compliance.
This was also a compliance.
Mr. Lee, I would remind your clients that we do have the authority to suspend or revoke their license for these, especially for these kind of egregious violations.
Yes, he's well aware of that, and his wife also drilled it into his head that pay more attention to the customer in front of you than on CCTV.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-four, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number fifty-five, Rainbow Valley Supermarket.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. James Lee representing Rainbow Valley Supermarket, Inc., TBA Rainbow Valley Supermarket. Sitting to my right, Mr. Jin Zafan, A-N. We also waive the reading of the charges and plead no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-five, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely. For, there were three previous violations, but for adjudication purposes, this is the first violation. I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
When were the three previous violations?
Nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-five, two thousand two.
Two thousand two. All right, so it's been sent back. Mr. Lee?
Yes, the person who was on duty, she was terminated. She didn't do her job right, and also right now, the store, where the stock transfer is in the works, so. The commission know that this won't happen again under his watch.
And this is up in the valley, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, close to the housing?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, right? Be very mindful of your customers in that area. Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-five, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number fifty-six, Kakao Wine Loft.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, my name is David Hayakawa, H-A-Y-A-K-A-W-A. I'm here as the attorney for Gateway Thirty-One LLC, TBA Kakao Wine Loft and Sake Collection, with our owner, Wing He Sin, present with me. And that's Wing, H-A-Y-A-S-I-N-N.
Do we read?
Yes, we waived reading the charge and no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-six, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
This is the first violation of sale of liquor to minor. I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
And was a ID asked for and presented?
It was asked for and presented, but it was, the liquor was sold.
And was it a vertical ID that was presented?
Correct, a vertical ID.
Mr. Hayakawa.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Sin is the owner-operator, pretty much the only significant employee for four years. They actually don't really have many younger people coming into the Sake Shop. On the date in question, she essentially had the flu and was working, and she failed. She got the ID, looked at it, and processed the transaction. I will say that she is a meticulous lady who takes this extremely seriously, coming into my office. I will say that I, not being the most empathetic person, had to explain to her that this is not the end of her business, and that, you know, the commission deals with issues like this fairly regularly. But I, that does not take away from the fact, obviously, it is a very important issue. But I can rest assured that her impression of the seriousness of this case cannot be overstated, and the likelihood that anything like this will ever occur again is practically non-existent and based on her reaction. So, thank you.
We would depend on you to counsel her and to help her, and we also have assistance from the administration here if she has any questions about any of the rules and regulations.
I do understand that a place like this probably does not get a lot of minors seeking to illegally purchase alcohol. However, a vertical ID was presented, and that should immediately raise a red flag whenever you see a vertical ID, and should require extra scrutiny on behalf of your employees and licensees.
One hundred percent.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-six, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. And calling agenda item number fifty-seven, Kahala Texico.
Good afternoon, Chair O'Donnell, members of the commission. My name is Barney Robinson, R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N. And to my right is Samantha Kim. She's the apparent successor to this business in a few years.
The charges honor about March second, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sole observed or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor, or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Swastika Maharjan, at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one seventy-eight, B one A of the Hawaii Revise statutes.
How would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-seven, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
There were two previous violations in two thousand five and two thousand nine, but for adjudication purposes, this is a second violation, the last one happening in March of twenty eighteen.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Well.
Sorry, 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 I meant a fine of two thousand dollars.
Two thousand, okay, thank you.
Well, I apologize for having to be here so soon after our last incident that occurred to us. So, we're very much aware of underage, selling restricted, age-restricted products to underage people. It's not consistent with the values and the ethics that we try to enforce at our station. The incident occurred, we are, we, we're in a very tight labor market. We've had more turnover in the last three years than we have in the last thirty, so it seems like we've been training almost consistently for the last three years. We do have a whole section designated in our owner's manual about age-restricted products and the importance of verifying ID. We have the weak card ID program all over the placid, all over the cashier counter. And we also have, and the register, when an age-restricted product appears, to verify the age. And this is where Sam can better explain the technology and this, how, what we're doing to prevent this from occurring again.
So in this situation, our employee, Ms. Wallace, accepted the ID and inputted the ID into, or the birthdate into our cashier register system. At that time, the underage product appears at the top of the screen that the customer is not able to buy the product. She did not, the employee did not see or see it on the top of the screen. Since then, about a week after the incident, we changed, we upgraded our registers to a new system. With the new system, we now have to scan the ID to make sure that the, in addition to other steps, to make sure the customer is of age to buy the product. Now, after you scan the ID, underage restriction would pop in the middle of the screen as opposed to the top, so it's very visible to the employees now in the middle of the screen.
Are the employees able to override that screen?
Unfortunately, they are. We've tried to contact the software program of the register, and we're not able to bypass that or take away that override. But however, we have trained our employees and drilled into them how important it is to do proper checks, to check the ID, make sure it's the person on the ID check, the birthdate, and put the birthdate into the register.
So, are you training your employees to totally be dependent on electronic?
No.
Device?
No, they have to do multiple steps, because they still need to make sure the person is who it is on the ID, the picture as well.
Thank you.
And we're constantly trained. We do an annual training, but then throughout the year, as we're witnessing their interaction with the customers, we're reminding them the importance of age verification.
Yeah, thank you.
So this new software was implemented through Texaco?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
So it's now being used with all the Texacos, correct? But the, you're scanning the ID, and it's still giving option to, it's coming up and saying that this person is underage, and it's still giving you an option to proceed with the sale?
No.
No.
No. So are we saying from here forward, as long as someone presents the proper ID, that it can't happen at all then?
If it scans, if it scans correctly, they, if it, forgive me, if it scans incorrectly, they cannot override an incorrect ID.
Okay, so the previous system, it was on the top of the screen. Now you scan the ID, it goes to the middle, and it says, this person is not authorized to purchase. What happens after that?
The sale is declined.
So they have to start all over with a sale, or they have to?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, so with the Texaco system, cannot do that?
You can't override, you can't override it.
There is, there is a button to override.
And who has that right to override?
Nobody should, but we can't take away that button off of the register. It's not possible.
So is it, are they trained to use that, however?
No.
No. So they're not even aware that it's capable of doing? It's not a training process that you say, if you're in a pickle, you press this button?
If the ID does not scan, so there have been situations where the ID has not scanned because there's like a sticker or something blocking the ID, and they check that the customer is of age, then they could input the birthdate manually.
And then even by manually doing it, the same provision pops up, and it says they're not able to purchase, correct?
If they're underage.
Right, so it appears, and they don't know about the override button, right?
Then they should not sell.
So it should be foolproof, right? Because scan doesn't go through, then you get the ID, it can't scan, you put it in. Nobody should know about that button other than the management. I mean.
Correct, but I mean, if they.
Is it a training regimen that you guys are telling them?
We're telling them that they should not press that button to.
Okay, so they shouldn't know about the button?
It says default, though, so if the cashier or employees press the button, then they'll know what it does, or it goes through the steps, you know?
Does it keep an audit report for you folks? Is there a report that spits out that says cashier two?
Every keystroke is transacting the electronic log on the register.
You can see how many times that default button is being pressed.
But I think to better answer your question, when an age-restricted product is scanned, it says, enter ID or bypass, and so it's, they're not forced to scan or enter an ID. They can bypass it prior to the entering of the data, either scanning or manually entering the data.
I guess, you know, we've heard from Texaco in the past, and, you know, we thought that this, this new system was going to be a good improvement for you guys in introducing to all Texacos. But obviously, it's still with the same situation that you're still able to override the sale if you're not checking the audit records to say cashier two seems to be defaulting through every sale, so it has to be some, because we'll be back in this situation again, basically is what I'm saying. And there's no perfect system to it, but as we hear how systems are being enhanced, and we hear of people putting a lot of money into these type of systems, yet is it the check and balance here, is it working, right? Because if there's a button to get you out of it, we're back to square one again, right?
But the system is a definite improvement, because we're able to scan, which speeds up the process of having to manually enter the data, making a keystroke error or a visual error, the eighty-nine or ninety-nine issue.
I think what we're saying is, this, this technology is a tool, but if you folks are not monitoring your employees and checking up on their actions regularly, we're going to see you again for this same violation, and we don't want to see you again, because we're already in a situation where the recommendation from the prosecutor is for a two thousand dollar fine. That's our maximum right now. So if you folks are in here again, very shortly, you know, we're in a situation of, do we find you the maximum again, or do we suspend your license?
Correct.
And we don't want to be in that situation.
Yeah.
So I would recommend seeing this as a tool, not a, you know, not the end-all be-all that, you know, it's going to do your jobs for you. It's your responsibility as the licensee not to make these sales, so it's your responsibility to make sure your employees are not making these sales. And so I would recommend getting, doing an audit regularly, and if there's employees that are regularly punching in the same dates, or pressing that default, or pressing the bypass, those, you can easily recognize that they're going to be a problem.
Well, you can imagine our horror and dismay when this happened again to us so recently.
I can, and that's why we're, that's why we're having this discussion on how to avoid it in the future.
If I may, by sharing, Ms. Neely, just for the record, will you verify that the ID was checked?
They asked for.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure for the record. Thank you.
So, Mr. Robinson, you're in a hot district. I mean, I think I saw you on the news maybe a couple months ago as well, so you're a very busy store, and you're on the map right now. So you got other activities going on over there you got to worry about, so this should be one of the least amount of things to worry about.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything for the Commissioner. Motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars, second.
Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-seven, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fifty-eight, Safeway Store, number two seven four seven. Pennsylvania. No. This is.
Good afternoon, Chair President, members of the commission, Ms. Yurai, Gabriel Prevenza, on behalf of the licensee. To my right is Chuck Ungos, last name U-N-G-O-S. He's the store director of the store in question. We waive reading the charges and wish to enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifty-eight, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
This is the first violation of sale of liquor to minor. I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Prevenza.
Okay, so this violation occurred in the context of the compliance, you know, liquor stings that were going on in March, and in this case, the sales clerk did request the ID, ID was presented, vertical format, should get those flags going off. She entered in the A birth date, and then according to the manager, and from what I can tell, she was very surprised to have gotten a violation, because the sale process after she put in the date, and she was kind of at a loss for why it happened, and then in the course of their investigation, they automatically suspend for three days, and they conduct their internal investigation as the standard. And while talking to her, she was like, well, you know, maybe I punched in the eighty-eight instead of ninety-eight, and then they went and they confirmed it with the computer. Kind of bizarrely, this happened with another Safeway store. As a result of this, the Safeways has implemented a new policy that vertical IDs come out, they're going to get a certain second person involved, you know, just as you were saying with the previous case, you know, the technology's good, but it's nothing if you don't have the people that are working at it, so getting a second person on it, they think will be an improvement, and hopefully prevent this kind of mistake, which this one seemed to have been.
Thank you.
Is that policy you just described going to be effective across all the stores here?
I'm going to be recommending that, so there's a kind of a security, age-restricted contact that our office has, and I'm going to be talking to them about implementing it storewide if it hasn't occurred already. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. What is the second person doing?
They have, so the manager, once they call over, I think the idea is.
So the manager, once they call over, I think the idea is, first and foremost, you get a second pair of eyes on it. And the person that sees the vertical ID, you know, so they're not embarrassed by the manager, is going to look hard at the ID, and they're going to, you know, weigh in as the manager comes in. Well, you know, here's a vertical ID. I want to make sure this is the date I want to punch in, get a confirmation from the manager, who, you know, in theory is going to be even more skilled at doing an ID check.
So the manager witnesses the employee punching in the birth date?
Correct.
So they call for the second person. They come over, they wait until the manager comes over, and then they enter the birthday.
That's how the policy should work. I imagine there's going to be some, you know, stickiness getting that policy going if the manager's not always right there, but that's the intention, is to have the manager come and check every time.
I would strongly recommend that you instruct your employees, if it's a vertical ID, there not to process the sale until they get the manager's approval.
Correct.
That's the sales, the process.
Agreed.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 58, recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 59, Monokil Liquor and Grocery, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Kim.
Good afternoon, once again, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, may I record, like the presence of Phil Harrison on behalf of the Joy Luck, Inc., the licensee in this matter. And to my right is John Kim, J-O-H-N-K-I-M, the proprietor. In this matter, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, we'd like to request a continuance of the hearing on these matters. I have not received disclosure on the matter, and I need that in preparation for any possible hearing.
Oh, that's correct. I have no objection. I think...
Do you have a date, Mr. Harrison?
I would prefer after... July 25th or after. I know that July 25th is a Thursday.
Yeah, I believe it's Thursday. I can't confirm all the scheduling, but I can check on that.
Do you want to just set for next available?
Yeah.
So long as after July 25th?
Yeah. And we can work out.
Thank you.
Say next available after July 25th.
Motion to continue, agenda item 59, Monokil Liquor and Grocery, to the next available date after July 25th.
Or on or after.
Or on or after July 25th.
I'd be fine. Thank you.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 59 is continued on or after July 25th?
Yes.
2019. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number 60, Monokil Liquor and Grocery.
Once again, good afternoon, may I record, like the presence of Phil Harrison on behalf of Joy Luck, Inc., the licensee. To my right again is John Kim. And similarly, we'd like to request a continuance of the proceedings. We haven't obtained disclosure of it yet.
That's correct. I have no objection.
And Mr. Harrison, would you like this to be also next available on or after the 25th?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Motion to continue, agenda item 60, Monokil Liquor and Grocery, to the next available date on or after July 25, 2019.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 60 is continued to the... On or about July 2019.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do we have any administrative matter?
One for the matter.
I'm sorry.
I apologize, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
One for the matter. My client had submitted a license renewal, paid his fee, and recently, apparently, they refunded back his fee. So we're wondering what is happening?
I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison, this item has not been agendized, so we cannot... We can't take any action or entertain it on the agenda.
Okay.
So you can call or come in and speak with our administration during regular business hours to ask your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any administrative matter?
I would just... If I just very quickly, the report that I put in your desk folders, American Renaissance, they were not scheduled to appear before you, but that's just an informational copy.
This is their post event report, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Ms. Shush, do you have any questions? What's your pleasure? Meeting adjourned.